Hi, it's seriously. Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. While the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
I would ask each member to, in turn, to say who they are and where they represent. I'm Alan Woodcock, Chair for today, and I represent East Ecclesfield.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Chaplin. I'm councillor Forssalty Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Tony Downey, Member for Mossburgh Ward.
Councillor Mary Lee, Donal Ward.
Councillor Laura Moynihan, Member for Manor Castle Ward.
Good afternoon, it's councillor Galway Weatherall from Shagrin-Bryce side Ward.
Henry Notteg, Member for Hillsborough Ward.
Peter Gilbert, Member for Ecclesall Ward.
Guinness Chapman, Member for Mossburgh Ward.
Andrew Sanger, councillor for Forward Ward.
Cliff Woodcraft, also councillor for Forward Ward.
Thank you, members. Do we have any apologies? John?
Yes, we've had apologies from councillor Whitaker, councillor Lee substituting for him, from councillor Ridler, councillor Moynihan substituting for her, from councillor Bellfield, and from councillor Elliot, and councillor Gilbert substituting for councillor Elliot. Thank you.
Do we have any reason to exclude press or public? No? And do we have any declarations of interest? Tony?
Yes, I'm afraid I'm going to have to withdraw on item 10. The fact being, I've been involved with the residents in the area and have been supporting their campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Minutes of the previous meeting, hold on 20 seconds if you like. Agree?
Agreed, Chair.
Thank you. Cycle visits, these will be sent out to members if it is necessary. Thank you. Item 7, proposed conversion of a public footpath to a shared footpath cycle track between Wilfrid Road and Sherland Lane at Darnall Sheffield S9. Page 13 of the agenda. Who's presenting?
Thank you, Chair. This is one or two footpaths in the Darnall area that require converting to shared pedestrian stroke cycle paths. These are to facilitate the creation of the connecting Sheffield-Darnall Attic Cliff and City Centre project, which provides improved links for pedestrian cyclists and public transport users. You can see there from the photo, that's the existing path, it is quite a wide path. However, to allow, to create a segregated path, which this will be, there'll be some additional widening on the left and on the right hand side. So on the left side, as we can see where the two bollards are, and then further towards the top, there's some widening on the right hand side. That land is currently in the council housing portfolio and will be dedicated as a footpath before the conversion takes place. Show the next slide, please. This is just an indication of the extent of the Darnall Attic Cliff City Centre project with the improved links. The link that we're looking at is circled red there. It's a relatively short link connecting Wilfrid Road and Sherland Lane that ultimately connects through to Stanleyford Road. Thank you, Chair.
Do we have any members' questions? Do we have... Well, Mary?
To clarify, this, the cycle lane is going through between Sherland Muse and, from Wilfrid Road, and then between Sherland Muse, which is just a small group of houses adjacent to a park, and then Sherland Place, I think it is. And it goes all the way, will it go, the cycle track go all the way up to the end of Sherland Lane where it meets Palfour Road? Is that right?
Thanks, Chair. The purpose of this is just to convert that short section because the remainder from the end of the footpath will be on to all-purpose highway. So there's further improvements on that part of Sherland Lane, I believe, as part of the DAC. That's obviously not something I've been involved with, the DAC scheme, the full details can be found on that. I understand that there is some improvements being made at the junction with Stanleyford Road and Sherland Lane, but they're not relevant to this proposal.
No. I don't, I've heard that the Sherland Lane will become one-way, is that right?
I think that is what, my understanding is that from Stanleyford Road, there'll be no entry from Stanleyford Road.
From Stanleyford Road?
I think that's what it is.
Despite the businesses use it, and we're not going, obviously it's not about that at the moment, but that will be a problem. Just want to highlight that when the cars and businesses use it, Sherland Lane.
Yeah, I think those are part of the consultation for the overall DAC, which is a separate matter.
And that's still ongoing, that consultation?
I don't know, to be honest.
Right, okay. And I know a lot of children use that path. Has that been taken into consideration, that there's kids going to and from school, to Oasis Academy? And I know it's only a short piece of path, but it's a busy path, and lots of children do use it, and they go, obviously to Oasis Academy, they go to the park. Is, are people taking that into consideration? Then there's bikes flying through Sherland, that space?
Those would have been taken into consideration as part of the overall DAC scheme, but the fact that this is a segregated path suggests that there's been a, rather than a shared surface path, suggests that there's some consideration being given to keep highway users apart, to avoid any collisions of that sort.
And the segregation will just be, what will that look like?
You'll have a, the path will effectively be split, so you'll have a pedestrian side and a cyclist side that are clearly marked on the path.
But will there be a physical barrier between the two paths?
No.
It'll just be marked out?
It will just be marked out, yes.
Okay. Well, that won't make much difference to a lot of people as they're walking up and down that path, will it? I don't think it will, anyway.
Thank you, Chair. Have there been any public objections to this? Is it a consultation? I haven't seen any in the...
Okay, so this has not gone to public consultation yet. Once we get approval from this committee, we will be making the order, and that's the point when the public will be consulted on it. So notices will appear at the site and to adjoining properties and in the press. So that, there'll be a six-week consultation period then, where the public can make comments.
Okay, so if these comments, you know, there's some substantial negative ones, will this then come back to committee again?
I think there's two processes here. There's the overall DAC scheme, which is under consultation, I'm not sure if that's been confirmed yet. And then there's the, then the order that we will make. So if we receive any objections, we will have to bring this back to committee to seek approval to refer to the Secretary of State.
Gary?
Yeah, Chair, have we seen over, for years in Sheffield, we've got cycle lanes outside of footpaths, and all you've got, you've got no physical barriers. And as far as I, and officers might be able to tell me different, as far as I can recall, there's no signage warning members of public or warnings to the bike riders to, you know, to cycle carefully and keep on the red side, which is theirs. And do we monitor accidents on these footpaths?
Again, that's not something that I would be considering. As a cyclist, I'm aware that that is the situation. They are signed to a level where segregated shows a blue sign with a white line down the middle with pedestrians on one side, cyclists on the other, or it'll have a cycle symbol on the footway itself. But these are not, there's considerations for the scheme or part of the DAC consultation. I understand there's been a lot of public comments, both for it and negative, but I'd say that's not my area.
Mary?
If you go on Google Maps, you can, people can see how narrow that path is, and just a few yards further up the road, up Wilfrid Road from the path, is Sherland Lane. So there's two ways to Sherland Lane, through that pedestrian, that path that pedestrians use, and then further up the Wilfrid Road, about 10 yards, 20 yards, and you get onto Sherland Lane. I'm just wondering, why use that path when you could just go just a few hundred yards, a few yards up the road and then onto Sherland Lane?
Again, that's, it's part of the DAC scheme, it's not part of what I'm proposing here. The proposal here is to convert an existing footpath to a cycle track, but the overall DAC scheme is under a different consultation and a different committee, I understand.
Laura?
I find it a bit odd that we're talking about the DAC and you can't answer questions on it, which I totally understand, but then we're considering things that have implications. Wouldn't it have been better to take it as part of the DAC? So we've got a strategic view of all the transport changes in the area and the knock-on impacts on certain parts of it. I don't feel that I'm able to make a decision on this because I haven't got the wider implications.
Thank you, Chair. If members feel as though they're not able to make a decision in respect of whether or not to support the making of the order, it is an option to defer this matter until a later committee meeting for a later decision, where perhaps some of the information relevant to the questions that have been asked can perhaps be provided so that members do feel more informed and able to make a decision.
Defer?
I propose we defer.
Mary second. Let's see, a show of hands, please. That's four, four, against. Abstain. Two. So I'll just cast them out, then.
Which way?
Four.
Yeah. Forty-third.
Forty-third, yeah. Thank you, members. We'll move on to item eight.
Thank you, Chair. Having just had a conversation with the officer about the items on the agenda and the order in which they're proposed, if we swap the next two items in their order, it could be more useful to members insofar as the implications for the next item are, we think, best considered by looking at the following item first. So that's a swapping of the next two items on the agenda.
So we look at item 10 next.
Item nine, rather than...
Item nine?
Yeah.
Right. So we'll move to item nine. Proposed conversion of a public footpath to a shared footpath cycle track between Watkins Close and Stanleyford Road, Darnall S9. Page 35 of the agenda. Obviously, please.
Thank you, Chair. Could you just show, yeah, that slide, yeah, thank you. Right, this is effectively the continuation of the part of the cycle route, so you'll see the road opposite, this is Stanleyford, the main road that's running from left to right is Stanleyford Road, the one north of it is Sherland Lane. The subject path in this case is a path that connects Watkins Close with Stanleyford Road. Watkins Close is a fairly recent development, built in the last 15 years. It's quite a large development. This will provide a cycle link into that estate as part of the aforementioned DAC. There won't be any widening necessary for this, although the bollards will require repositioning because obviously they're an obstruction to cyclists. Yeah, so that's a continuation of the rule that we've just been discussing. And that will be segregated.
I would suggest that this is deferred as well because it clearly has its further length of the same cycle path, and it affects Sherland Road again, so and Stanleyford Road, I think it should be subject to the overall DAC. It's the same argument, I would contend. Thank you, Chair.
I'll second that, Chair, yeah.
Crabbish O'Handan again, please. Three, four. Deferral, against, deferral. Four. That's four. Abstain. One. I'm sorry, that's lost. The deferral's lost, yeah.
So we have four, four, four against, and two abstentions.
One attention, one.
Three abstentions.
Go on, then. Four, four, that's right, I'll vote four. I'll vote four. That's it. Deferral.
I'll just make a comment. I'm just commenting about why these two things weren't in just one paper, rather than split, because, and again, just make the point that the whole, the whole cycle scene from Eppingham Road that we've been talking about, which ends by a railway track, or Watkins Close leaves a railway track, I'm not sure why we're using that as a cycle track, it may be something I don't know, but if it's something I don't know, then how can we make a decision? I'm just making that point.
But we did, well, it's now deferred, as is the other one, yeah. We now move to item eight, back to item eight. Proposed conversion of a public footpath to a shared footpath cycle track between Exeter Drive and Moore Street, Brumall Sheffield S3. Page 25.
Thank you, Chair. It's going to be deja vu, this. I understand the Netheredge Wedge is an approved scheme, there's no further consultation on that. This is similar to the aforementioned proposals, except that this is off the bottom end of Moore Street, where just before Ecclesall Road merges into Moore Street by the big roundabout where Waitrose is. The proposal here is to use an existing wide footpath link that connects through from Exeter Drive to Moore Street. Some improvements will be made, as you can see at the bottom right hand side of the red polygon that I've drawn. That area where it meets Moore Street will be segregated. There were some other improvements, such as tactile crossings at that point. Other than that, there's no further widening. It is quite a wide, substantially wide path, so much so that it's got bollards at the Exeter Drive end preventing vehicles using it. And this is a proposal as part of the, what's referred to as the Netheredge Wedge scheme as part of connecting Sheffield.
Do you have any members' questions? Andy?
Yeah, well, I mean, this has all come as a bit of a shock the last 15 minutes. I mean, as I understand, the process that we're doing today is that these are legal decisions taken because we're changing the designation of the highway. So ours to have been in Darnall, which we've deferred, and now we're talking about this scheme that crosses Ecclesall Road. These are all schemes that TRC have agreed in principle, cross-party, but obviously legally, we all have to look at the merits of the individual scheme on its own irrespective of what's happened at Policy Committee. So I'm completely confused why deferral wasn't answered, because the consultation is a TRC consultation, it's not consultation on these schemes. As I understand it, this is a legal process here, we're looking at whether the officers have done the correct legal process in terms of changing the designation of these roads and footways and to shared use. Is that the process we're going through, or have I got confused?
The decision being made here is whether or not the council should make an order to convert a footpath into a shared-use cycle track and footpath. If there has already been a decision made in respect of a wider scheme, then it would be consistent with that decision for this committee to make a decision to proceed with that order. What I think has been asked is a series of questions relevant to whether or not, if that wider scheme had been approved, it provides a basis on which for this committee to proceed. And I think that question is outstanding. We know that the other committee has made a decision, it's just what the implications of that decision are. So if officers, having heard the members' questions here and with the items being deferred, are then in a position to gather that information, and if that provides suitable reassurance to members at a later committee meeting so as to proceed with the decision, then one imagines that then that decision would be made quite straightforwardly.
That's fine, I mean, that's the situation as I understood it, and certainly from this one, the challenge with this scheme is not particularly this bit, there are challenges in terms of the overall scope of the scheme and the potential cost, but in terms of this particular part of it, I've got no concerns about this particular part of it. But as I say, I think a number of us have got concerns about how we keep within the financial envelope, but that's not a decision for today.
Laura?
My only concern about this process is that public consultation comes after you've made an order. Somehow that doesn't sit right with me in terms of community engagement and getting citizens' views. I would have thought we should have consulted with people before we made the order, but what do I know? I'm just elected.
Thank you, Chair. The consultation in respect to the order-making would provide the public with an opportunity to give their views on any aspect of the order-making. So if they had concerns similar to those that had been expressed by the members at this meeting, then that is something that, where they constitute objections to the order would need to be resolved before that order could be confirmed so as to be brought into effect. So it's not the case that where one of these cycle track conversion orders is made, that that then means inevitably that the relevant footpaths will become cycle tracks. If members of the public were to object to those orders, then it would be necessary, I think, as part of the process of trying to resolve those objections, for the council's officers to engage with objectors and to address concerns that they had raised in respect of the orders. Whether or not the members of this committee regard that as a suitable procedural safeguard, such that they would feel comfortable with progressing to approving the making of an order, is naturally a matter for you to decide. But that is the process insofar as the legal aspect of it.
Peter?
Thank you, Chair. As I understand it, the Netheredge Wedge has been consulted on publicly. Is that correct?
Yes, it has.
So what we're being asked to do is simply support the plan to enact what's already been agreed by TRC. The only reason to object to this is simply to drag things further into the future and hinder any chance of getting active travel infrastructure into Sheffield for the sake of it. Thank you.
Laura?
I know what Peter says, but this isn't about delaying active travel, this is about genuine consultation. Surely we've learned from the traffic calming measures we did in Netheredge where we didn't talk to people? That's all I'm saying. I'm of the school that would rather bring people with us and listen to consultation.
Andy?
Yeah, I absolutely, I hear what both my colleagues are saying. I mean, clearly this process is not working for members. You know, the process has been, and as Laura has rightly said, the process post the problem we had with those particular schemes, which started during Covid and were, started when the council had a cabinet scrutiny system, and the public felt very imposed upon. So these two schemes, the DAC scheme and the Netheredge Wedge, are schemes that have been worked up before coming to Transport, Regeneration, Climate Committee and been to the political parties, and then they have been consulted on, and then there's been a public document that went to committee. And now we've got through that process, and now we're on the detailed bit, on part of the detailed bit, is when roads have to check, when footpaths in this case have to change their legal designation. There's still then, it's got to go back to TRC for detailed work and detailed responses to the public. But I just think officers need to pick up the point that members don't feel as if the process has been fully explained, either in terms of DAC or Netheredge, or Netheredge Wedge. I think members, you know, all 84 of us, need clearer understanding of how the new process works because it is very confusing. There are a number of places where the public can have inputs and be consulted, and I think we've all got into a bit of a mess on this, so I think we need a clearer explanation from officers about the whole process, because it's a two- or three-year process for these sort of schemes, and planning the Highlands Committee is just, is taking an element of it, but it's only one element. But, you know, I absolutely get what councillor Moynihan's saying, that it doesn't feel as if the public are being consulted at the right time. And so I think we all need clear guidance from the officer team on how the process is meant to work, because I don't think it's working for us today. Thanks, Chair.
Any further questions? Gary?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I thought officers were going to come back to councillor Sanger then, but, you know, because there's lots of ways for consultation to happen locally, you know, through the likes and different things. But, and we, councillor Moynihan, councillor Gilbert started waving a piece of paper about, and I couldn't see what the piece of paper was, maybe officers can tell me that...
It's the consultation.
Right. So I can have, yeah, you can have it back, mate, I've got one. Thanks. So I wonder if officers can tell me where, you know, what they're asking us for us to do now, because if you've already had the consultation, what do you want us to do here?
Insofar as decision-making's being deferred, then my understanding of the discussion earlier is that there is some information that is outstanding that members feel they need so as to be able to fully assess the implications associated with making a decision to convert the footpaths that we have been discussing on the agenda into shared footpaths and cycle tracks. I do think it's the case that where members are being asked to make a decision as regards whether or not these orders should be made, that they should have a full appreciation of the implications associated with those decisions, and that even though it's the case that decisions have been made in respect to the wider schemes, it would seem to be the case here at this meeting that some of the information related to those decisions being made, the implications... to those decisions being made, the implications of those decisions, is something that members feel they need more information on before they're able to proceed. And with that being the case, a decision to defer, obtain that information, and have it be discussed by the committee at a later date would be one of the potential ways forward. A decision has been made to defer in respect of this item, if a decision's made to defer this one, it would be consistent with the others.
Mary?
When it comes back, can we just have some details about how consultation will take place and how they intend to get to people who are sometimes very hard to reach in some of our areas? That would be important, I think, because having a consultation in a building when two or three people turn up is not a consultation, in my view.
Right. I need to ask what people want to do with this one. Do they want to defer it? Or is this one going to go through? So deferral on this one?
So, Chair, I suggest that we defer this, because it makes it consistent, and we can get highways officers to put, you know, some paragraphs in the report explaining the wider position and the complete package of consultation that's involved, because, you know, members are clearly not content with the explanation of the process in this report. And, you know, a bit more information would help. So I propose that we defer this.
I'll second that, Chair.
Can I have a show of hands, please? For deferral. Against? Two, three, sorry. Abstentions. That's deferred, thank you very much. Next item, item 10, which is proposed conversion of a public footpath to a shared footpath cycle track between Watkin Close Donovan Road to Sheffield. We did do that, yeah, sorry. Right, no. Item 10 is being put in incorrectly. Item 10 is tree preservation order 489 Elmwood and Coach House, High Street, Mosborough, S20, 4EF. Tony has left the building. So I'll ask Simon to give a presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Simon Farimund, and I am a community tree officer who deals with planning-related matters related to tree protection. This afternoon, I am seeking confirmation of TPO 489 for trees at Elmwood and the Coach House on High Street, Mosborough. The TPO was made on the 8th of April 2025 to protect multiple trees located within the grounds of both properties. A copy of the order with its map is attached in Appendix A of the report. The house of Elmwood and its grounds were built in the 19th century and were originally part of the larger Mosborough Hall estate. The grounds have since been separated into two, with Elmwood and the Coach House forming two separate properties with surrounding gardens. An aerial image and historic map of the properties can be seen on the screen side by side. The site has been recognised as having local historical importance by inclusion of the grounds within policy BE21. The background paper for inclusion can be found in Appendix C of the report. The supplementary planning guidance on Sheffield's Historic Parks and Gardens supplements this policy and states that the character, setting and appearance of historic parks and gardens will be protected. As a result of inclusion in the policy, the garden has also been included in the local heritage list of South Yorkshire. In July 2024, the council received communication from the owner of Elmwood requesting that trees at both Coach Houses and their property be protected by a tree protection order. The reason being that regardless of the historical importance of the entire grounds, it is not situated within a conservation area, so the vast majority of the matured trees, which are key features, have no protection. In the event of the property changing hands, this means that nothing would prevent uncontrolled felling and pruning of trees. The owner of Elmwood also requested the TPO in response to recent episodes of trespassing damage to trees of both properties. This has involved unauthorised people entering the grounds and improperly pruning boundary trees in a damaging manner. Both issues are especially concerning considering the owner of the Coach House is elderly. With regard to expediency, the TPO assessment recognises that this is precautionary only. Government guidance states, changes in property ownership and intentions to fell trees are not always known in advance, so it may sometimes be appropriate to proactively make orders as a precaution. Site visits were conducted by myself and tree officer Vanessa Lyons on 1st of July and 9th of October 2024 to assess the trees in relation to the merits of serving a TPO. The second visit in October followed a very recent event of trespass and criminal damage at Elmwood. The owner had returned home to find unauthorised people on their property carrying out damaging work to trees. TPO assessments of the trees were carried out over the course of the visits, and copies of these included in Appendix B. Trees have been grouped in these assessments according to species and qualities. Following from this, it is my recommendation that it would be expedient in the interest of amenity to make several individual trees and groups subject to a tree preservation order. With regards to the visual immunity of trees, T1 to T8 have visibility from the boundary with Sheffield Road, above buildings from the vantage point of Hulside Court, or directly from Pingle Walk. The possible decline of ash trees fronting the eastern boundary of the property with Sheffield Road will open up T1 to T3 to wider public visibility. These trees make a valuable contribution to the visual immunity of the area. The row of lime trees, T9 to T12, and groups of evergreens, G1 to G3, have very limited public visibility. All trees within the grounds were found to be in good structural and physiological condition, especially considering their advanced ages. Trees have a good retention span, an estimate of 20 to 40 years or 40 to 100 years is given, depending on species' potential lifespan. Trees are a long-lived species with available space to be retained in the long term. An assessment of the location in which the trees are growing indicates that nothing would curtail the tree's potential retention, there being minor pruning which could address any actionable nuisance caused by contact of the canopies with adjacent structures. The tree score of three for other factors in the tempo assessment due to being either key components of or making a significant contribution to the historic formal landscape. The holly and yew are specifically referenced in the background paper as being indicative of planting typical of the Victorian age in which the garden was created. Nine objections to the TPO have been received. These can be found in Appendix D of the report along with my responses. A summary of the points made and the objections are: the trees have not been previously maintained, and the TPO will create a barrier to future management. This point forms the majority of the objections and relates to current issues caused by the proximity of the trees to property boundaries and the pingle. A TPO does not prevent work being carried out to trees. It only requires an application process to be followed to control the impact of the work. Similarly, a TPO does not affect common law nuisance abatement rights. Property owners can still prune back overhanging branches to their boundaries following consent. If damage is being caused, then the authority's consent is not required for carrying out the minimum amount of work to prevent damage. In other words, a TPO does not affect the rights of a neighbouring property owner. The order is a method for the owners to avoid cost and responsibility. Trees will be left unmanaged and become unsafe. A TPO does not affect tree ownership, responsibility, or whether there exists a duty of care by the tree owner. The TPO only controls the quality and impact of the work being carried out to prevent disproportionate harm to high-value trees. By ensuring good standards of maintain, this actually reduces the likelihood of future intervention-related problems developing, which will affect both tree owner and neighbour. Should safety concerns arise, the TPO may prevent timely intervention with delays or excessive administration. Exemptions exist which mean the authority's consent is not required to carry out certain work to trees. This includes urgent work to remove an imminent risk of serious harm and work to dead trees and branches. There is a short notice period only, which prevents administrative delays in situations where urgent action is required. The order should include a maintenance plan to reduce both ordinary nuisance issues and prevent the trees becoming dangerous. The purpose of the TPO is to protect the trees in the interest of amenity, not to impose management work on the tree owner. There is no legal mechanism within the Town and Country Planning Act to create conditions within a TPO, even if this was reasonable to do so. The visibility of the trees is limited to the property owners and directs neighbours only, so they do not have sufficient amenity value to warrant protection. The though value of the trees is offset by the negative impact they have on the neighbouring properties. As previously discussed, the majority of the mature deciduous trees have visibilities from the boundary with Sheffield Road, above properties, or directly from Pingle Walk. The row of lime trees and groups of evergreens have very limited public visibility, but this does not deprive them of amenity value, as public visibility alone does not constitute value. The government guidance advises that trees may also be assessed by reference to historic value and contribution to the landscape. These factors are all reflected in the tempo assessment of the trees, where all final scores reach the threshold for supporting a defensible TPO. The negative impacts of the trees, such as shade and seasonal debris, can be addressed with an application for pruning work. This would be appropriate proportionate means of dealing with said issues, rather than them being reasons why the TPO should not be confirmed. It is not clear which of the trees on the order have historical significance and which are later additions. It is not clear if the grounds of the Coach House are covered by the schedule of historic gardens. The description of the grounds in the background paper discusses the gardens in general terms and doesn't list all trees present. Several trees are not mentioned but can be estimated to be over 100 years old due to their lower stem diameters. Even if the trees are potentially later planting, the large stature and quality means they make a significant contribution to the garden landscape. The plan included with the background paper and historic map shows the Coach House and associated grounds being part of the original Elmwood Estate. Without maintenance, the trees threaten the 19th century boundary walls of the property, which also form an important part of the historical heritage of the area. As mentioned previously, a TPO does not restrict appropriate management of trees. This includes work to prevent damage to structures. The location of the trees in the TPO plan is potentially inaccurate, in some cases showing the trees impacting the incorrect boundary. The government guidance states, there is no requirement in the regulations to describe trees in the schedule and plot them on the map with pinpoint accuracy. The purpose of the plan of tree locations is to be able to identify which trees are protected and which trees are not, so accuracy only needs to be sufficient for this purpose. The location of the trees related to potential impacts is not relevant to the order. Considering that the trees identified are the only ones of the species in the immediate area, the level of accuracy of the plan serves its purpose. In closing, my recommendation is that the TPO is confirmed without modification to protect the important components of this historically significant garden. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Do you have any questions? Gary?
Yeah, just one, Chair. It's just, I'm surprised where we've got TPOs on, you know, trees like Texas cicada, Alex acerfolium, aces and things like that. Is that what you were saying earlier about it's all about the environment, they come under that section? You know, because that's...
Andy?
Sorry, I don't quite follow.
You've named quite a few trees. Texas cicada is one of them, which is the common yew, and the holly, Alex acerfolium. And you're saying that they're to Texas species, but is that because they're protected, you're saying they're protected because it's in the environment, in the garden setting?
When you say protected, do you mean the existing protection on some trees or the current protection of the order? Well, I guess the ecology of it doesn't, you know, we can take that into account when assessing amenity value, but it has to have a particularly elevated level of ecological value, so kind of rare species protection. In this instance, the tree's greatest strengths are their contribution to this historic garden, and that's the setting in which they're assessed. But as you say, you know, things like yew in particular, a very valuable native species, do also have additional values, as do all trees, and the benefits they provide to the local environment. Yeah, thanks for that. Thanks, Chair. Cheers.
Any further questions? Comments? Mike?
I think probably I haven't been on the committee that long, but compared to some people here, but this is the first time I can recall that it's the owner of the grounds that wants the TPO in a house that's been established for well over a century and the grounds with it. And it's the neighbours around about that are objecting to the TPO, which is different to what we normally face. But I think there's no doubt about the amenity value that trees bring, and certainly a lot of councillors here have had to go through a learning curve to understand the real value of trees and what they bring, not only to the landscape, but to the environment, to carbon storage, and so many other things. So I'm minded to support this TPO. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Ben?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. This obviously is in my ward, so a difficult position for me, but I understand from loads of people, some of the T1, definitely T2 and 23 overflow onto a public footpath. It's very difficult walking up a very busy road. It's the main road from Eckington and Derbyshire into Sheffield as far as we're concerned. And the trees, you just can't sometimes walk up the path, because the trees, and there's only a footpath on one side, you can't go on the other side. And also the pingle footpath is very popular with dog walkers and everything else, and that's difficult to get up and down when it's full of leaves. So I understand both sides of the argument here. I understand somebody wanting to preserve the trees, but I also understand all those people who struggle with the way the trees grow, not within the property, but without the property. So I'm undecided.
Thank you, Glins. Mike?
Just picking up on Glins's point, if they are actually growing out onto the highway and over public rights-of-way footpaths, does not the council have a responsibility to make sure that those footpaths and routes remain accessible to the public?
Thank you, Chair. The council, acting in its capacity as highway authority, has a duty to assert and protect the rights of users of public rights-of-way, so that's the general public, and it has powers available to it to serve notice on landowners, adjacent landowners to public footpaths, so as to compel them to remove a danger or obstruction or another interference with that public right-of-way. So if there is a persistent issue, then that is certainly, I think, something that's within the council's powers to potentially take action to remedy.
Yeah, I've been down that road before with different places, and it's not always easy. Notices are served, but the private owners of properties don't always deal with the trees, and it is a long process.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll just add on to what I just mentioned to say that the particular power that I was referring to earlier would enable the council to act in default in the event that the landowner doesn't comply with the notice with which they would be served. Obviously, it is a decision for officers to make as to whether or not they would serve such a notice and then follow through with carrying out works in default. Nevertheless, the possibility is available.
Any further comments? Question? Can we take a vote, please, by hand, for the officer decision? Unanimous, thank you very much. Item 11, record on a... Item 11, record of planning, appeals submissions and decisions deferred from the meeting of the Planning and Highways Committee held on the 22nd of July 2025.
Has councillor Darren left for good, or do we need to...
Of course. Mike? Tony, right? If out and tell Tony you can come in.
No, Tony has left the meeting.
What, completely?
Yes. Yes, he did say he would leave completely.
That's area. Brad?
I have nothing to add to the report, Chair, unless there are any questions.
No, thank you. Record of...
Yeah, can I just express our thanks to officers that deal with enforcement issues and say that overall, and also, sorry, with the appeals, and although some appeals do go against the council, it is pleasing to see that quite a lot are upheld by the inspector. Thank you.
Item 12, record of planning, appeals submission and decisions. Hey, you see, can we note it? That's it. That's noted. Date and time of next meeting, it will be on the 16th of September at 2pm. Thank you very much, members.